Good evening. I call the meeting of the Planning Commission of the City of San Gabriel for Monday, July 10th, to order at 6:32 PM. Let's all stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Can we please have the roll call?
Chair Clowitter. The chairman is absent this evening.
Commissioner Lee.
Here.
Commissioner Crapman.
Also absent.
Commissioner McMorris.
Here.
And Vice Chair Schwartz.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Tonight's meeting is live streamed on cable channel three and on our online platforms. To prevent any overlap in comments, each commissioner will be called upon to speak on each item. Item one tonight is public comment. This is a time set aside for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on items of interest that are not on the agenda but are within the subject matter of the Planning Commission. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the Commission cannot answer any questions or take any action until such time as the matter may appear on an item in a future agenda. If you wish to address the Planning Commission, there's a speaker cards in the back. Please fill those out and give them to Jackie, and we will call on you in the order they're received. Each speaker will be given up to three minutes to speak. So, public comment. Do we have any speakers tonight? Okay, thank you. Okay, next is the consent calendar. These are items that are, can be approved in one motion, and pretty much tonight, I think it involves the approval of the minutes, right? So, the minutes are for June 12th? Does everybody have a chance to look at the minutes?
Yes.
Okay. Can we have a motion to approve the June 12 minutes, please?
I make the motions to approve.
A second.
Thank you, Commissioner Lee. Commissioner McMorris, okay. Roll call.
Vice Chair Schwartz.
Yes.
Commissioner Lee.
Aye.
And Commissioner McMorris.
Yes.
Vote is three to zero. Motion passed.
Thank you. All right. Before we move forward with our public hearings, I'm going to ask Planning Manager Samantha Twissart to go over the public hearing here in your seat tonight, please.
Yes, thank you, Vice Chair. Members of the Planning Commission, copies of tonight's agenda is available on the city's website at www.sangabrielcity.com, and then also by the table, on the table by the entrance as well as speaker cards. So if you are not the applicant this evening and wish to speak on an item, please complete a speaker card. So there are two public hearings this evening, and staff will be providing a summary of the staff report followed by any questions from the Planning Commission. And prior to the close of the hearing, the Commission may ask additional questions of either staff or the project applicant. However, once the public hearing is closed, the opportunity for public comment has ended. And once the public hearing portion is closed, the item will move into council deliberation. So Vice Chair Staff is ready to present the first item.
Item three, a citywide planning case number ZTA 23-02, Zone Text Amendment. And I believe that's yours. The applicant is the City of San Gabriel.
That's correct. Yes, thank you, Vice Chair. For this item, item A, staff is requesting to continue this item to the next regular Planning Commission meeting on August 14th, and this is to allow staff time, additional time to complete the draft text amendment relating to objective design standards in the zoning code, the Valley Boulevard specific plan, and the Mission District specific plan. This item was first introduced to the Planning Commission and the City Council at the joint study session on March 22nd of this year, and this is in response to new legislation from the state. There are a couple of illustrations that are currently being worked on, but by the August 14th meeting, the draft text amendment should be available to come before the Planning Commission for review and consideration. And so with that, staff is recommending that the item be continued to August 14th.
Okay. Thank you. Do either of you have any clarifying questions, or are we prepared to move forward?
Vice Chair, I have a quick follow-up.
Go ahead.
Just trying to understand, these items in front of us due to timeline or due to the budgets, or why do we, why do we have to decide today?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Lee. Originally, staff had timed and scheduled the Zone Text Amendment to be completed by this meeting date. However, as we continue to work on the draft, there were areas where, in staff's opinion, staff also wanted to include some illustrations to better communicate the proposed Zone Text Amendment. So we're currently finalizing those so that we can have a complete draft to bring to the Planning Commission for review. So that's the purpose of the requested additional time.
Okay, so we are setting August 14th to be the date. Do you need kind of like blanket timeline? Is that would be better?
No, no, August 14th should be adequate time, and the complete draft will be provided to the Planning Commission for review.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Do you have any questions? No. Okay. So, do we need, are there any public comments on this item? Okay, seeing none. The public comment period is ended, and I guess we're ready to entertain a motion to continue the item.
Yeah, I'll make a motion. Looks like we'll see this next month, so we'll get all the info then. So I motion to approve.
To continue? Okay, thank you.
Aye, second.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, roll call, please.
Vice Chair Schwartz.
Yes.
Commissioner Lee.
Aye.
And Commissioner McMorris.
Yes.
The vote is three to zero. Motion passed.
Thank you. Okay. Item, the second item is 1830, South San Gabriel Boulevard, planning case number CUP 23-005, conditional use permit, applicant Patrick Yang. Presentation by Marlon.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Good evening, Commissioners. The public item, public hearing item before you tonight is for conditional use permit for a parking reduction of five spaces for an existing commercial building located at 1830 South San Gabriel Boulevard, planning case number 23-005. Next slide, please, Jackie. The project site is located on the east side of South San Gabriel Boulevard between Valley Boulevard to the north and Marshall Street to the south. The property measures approximately 18,795 square feet and is currently developed with a 9,328 square feet commercial building and adjacent parking lot. No changes to the building size are proposed. Next slide, please. The subject property is zone MU-CR, or mixed-use commercial residential, and is located within the Valley Boulevard specific plan area. The existing two-story commercial building was most recently occupied by New Asia, a wholesale restaurant equipment supplier. Business license records indicate that this business ceased operation in 2015 with no new businesses occupying the building since. The applicant is proposing to operate a retail HVAC or heating, venting, and air conditioning supply store and ancillary storage occupying the entire building. Next slide, please. The request is for a 20% parking reduction pursuant to Section 153.220 H3 of the San Gabriel Municipal Code for Transit Accessibility, which states, "For any land use except residential, single unit, and duplex developments, if any portion of the lot is located within one-quarter mile of a transit stop with regular scheduled service during the weekday hours of 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., the number of required parking spaces may be reduced by 20% of the normally required number of spaces. Parking for general, commercial, and office uses in this zone are calculated at one space per 375 square feet of gross floor area, requiring 25 spaces for the proposed building. The site currently features 20 parking spaces, including seven compact spaces and one ADA accessible space, meeting the requirement for the 20% reduction." Next slide, please. As shown here, the subject, oh, next slide, please. As shown here, the subject property is located .1 miles from the nearest bus stop with regular service by Monobello Bus Lines, route 20 between San Gabriel and Monobello, meeting the qualifications for the request. Currently, the property exhibits limited maintenance due to vacancy, including parking lot and driveway paving in poor condition, landscaping also in poor condition, and an existing monument sign that is out of order. To improve these conditions, staff is recommending the added conditions to repair and maintain the driveway and parking lot, installation of trees and shrubs at rates consistent with the Valley Boulevard specific plan of one tree per three parking spaces and one shrub per every, excuse me, yes, one shrub per every five parking spaces, and for the repair of the existing monument sign. Next slide, please. Staff also reviewed the request for consistency with the San Gabriel general plan and found it to be consistent with Mobility Goal 3.2 to reduce traffic congestion in commercial and retail areas on Valley Boulevard, San Gabriel Boulevard, and Las Tunas Drive, as well as Economic Development Goal 4.1 to create a vibrant business community. Next slide, please. The proposed project was reviewed for compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act and was determined to be exempt per guideline section 15301, Class 1 for existing facilities. Next slide, please. On June 29th, a notice regarding the public hearing for this project was mailed to all property owners and tenants within a 500-foot radius of the project site, posted on the project site, and published in the June 29th, 2023 edition of the San Gabriel Sun. Additionally, the meeting agenda was also posted at City Hall and on the city's website. Next slide, please. With that, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of San Gabriel approving planning case number CUP 23-005 to allow parking reduction for an existing commercial building at 1830 South San Gabriel Boulevard subject to the recommended conditions of approval. That concludes staff's presentation, and I'm available for questions.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of Marlon? Go ahead.
Correct me if I'm wrong, there's currently 20 spaces there?
Yes.
Is that right? And the general plan, I'm just trying to understand what, I'm assuming the general plan changed after that building was there and those 20 spots were there, because if it's requiring 25, but it only has 20, is that, is that why there's fewer spots parking spaces?
Yeah, I unfortunately didn't write down the year when this was, this building was, or this property was developed. It was likely to be before the adoption of the Valley Boulevard specific plan, which requires the 25 parking spaces.
I see. Okay, thanks.
Mm-hmm.
Go ahead, please.
So, Marlon, do you know the parking spaces are designed for, just for compact, or is there any larger vehicle parking spaces there?
So seven of the spaces are compact, one is ADA accessible, and the rest are standard spaces.
Any truck or anything like that?
There are no truck parking spaces that are noted on the site plan, no.
So they're going to do things according to the conditions to the sign and to the parking lot, but not to the buildings, is that so?
No changes are being proposed or recommended for the building, just for the site itself and the sign.
Okay, good. Is the applicant here?
The applicant is here, yes.
Is the applicant prepared to say something, to speak to us, or?
Are you available, Ms.? Yes.
Okay. Why don't we hear from before we do the public hearing?
Sure. Okay.
Hi, my name is Patrick Yang. So if you have any question, I'm here to answer your question.
Any questions?
Trying to understand the nature of this type of business, do you think you would be working a lot with contractors using a lot of big trucks?
I think so. Most of them will be like a Ford 150, like the, that kind of truck, yeah.
Yes, that is what I imagine, right? Like, so looking at the layout of the parking lot, probably it would be helpful for your business, right, to have, to convert some of the parking spaces into like a truck parkings or something, right? Because like, the contractor is going to be coming in, dropping off, picking up the HVACs from your shops. So I think we, it would be nice to have a couple truck parking, or maybe like three or four.
Yeah, that, I guess that kind of leads me to a question to maybe for staff, then it's, I mean, I don't know what a standard spot is, but I'm assuming it can, it can, it's big enough for like a Ford F-150 or 250, but is it, it's fine then if, so for instance, they, they need to take two spots for one truck, and as long as there's enough space there for the incoming and outgoing traffic, I'm just assuming that it's probably not possible to reduce space, to make some bigger, just because of the, it looks like they're only allowed to decrease the currents, like they're okay with the 20, but if they go more than that, then do they have to get additional approval, or how does that work?
So the standard-sized spaces are nine by 18, which is what they're proposing for the standard spaces. 20% would be the maximum reduction for transit accessibility. Anything further would require them to conduct a parking study, and it would be, usually that applies to spaces with, excuse me, properties with shared parking for multiple businesses where they have staggered hours and things like that. As far as truck parking, our code doesn't really specify any larger spots for, for different types of uses like trucks, but if, if this commission felt it was adequate or appropriate to require additional spaces or provide additional, larger spaces on site, then that could be a condition of approval.
Well, I'm just, I'm just wondering how many, like, maybe the applicant can speak to you, like, how much traffic they typically, I'm assuming if most of it's coming, dropping off, picking up with 20 spaces, even if there's some big trucks, is that, I mean, are the, is, do they feel like they have enough space? And does staff, I guess, I'm hoping that what the situation is, is enough for the type of traffic that will be going in and out of there, but they foresee some large trucks that maybe need to further kind of change the current structure, then that's something maybe we should discuss, but I, I don't know if that's needed or not.
So one item that I failed to mention is that portion of this, this building will be used for, for storage of a lot of the HVAC equipment, which typically requires a lower parking ratio. This specific building was calculated at a parking ratio entirely of retail, 375 square feet. Typically, industrial or storage-type uses have a lower ratio of parking requirement. So being that the entire building was calculated at a ratio for retail, even though not the entirety will be used for retail, we do anticipate that there will be more parking than, than what is required for this type of use and the size of the type of use.
Do we need anything else with the, with that?
Vice Chair, if I may follow up.
I'm sorry? You have followed with the applicant?
Yes.
Okay.
I have to say, actually, I'm the designer for this, this job, and the tenant is not here. The, the business owner is not here, but the night, I know, yeah, the, the tenant, proposed tenant, they have a large warehouse in El Monte, and this is the, they want to expand their business to here. So basically, here will be, become a retail, the showroom. And as I know, the, when the contractor come to pick up, they have a big time, so I believe the parking lot will be sufficient, yeah.
Okay, yeah, that was my follow-up, because like, if the contractors are basically dealing with on the other location, the main location for pickup and drop-off and stuff, then, then, you know, the per, per day city code should be sufficient.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Now is the time for public comment on this item. Jackie, do we have any speaker cards, or have we received anything by email?
Yes, Vice Chair, we received one by email.
Okay.
And it's from Mr. Jeffrey Santner. And he said, he supports the proposed project, and he said, consistent, it is consistent with the Valley Boulevard specific plan. I think we need to reduce parking in our city in order to create a more vibrant, dense, walkable corridor. This store does not need 25 parking spaces. I doubt they will ever be full, and they will just create more sprawl, which will induce more demand for people to drive everywhere instead of walking. I support the staff report, which recommends the commission approves the case and reduces the required parking. The agenda appears to contradict the staff report, which I'd like to bring to your attention. And that's the end.
Thank you. Do we have any speaker cards on this, on this issue? Anybody want to speak on this? As fellow speaker card. Okay, thank you. Then the public comment period is closed. All right, it's time for Commissioner discussion deliberation on this item. So would anybody, you want to go first?
Yeah, sure. I, I mean, I think, it seems like this has been a spot that's been, this storefront has been empty for a while, so it, it needs to be filled, you know, and I think that this is a good business. Given that the applicant said that their primary location is elsewhere and that this is going to kind of primarily be a showroom, I, I think that the parking should be sufficient. I, you know, even if there are some larger trucks that, that are going to be going in and out of there, so, I mean, I'm, I'm comfortable approving. I'm happy to hear out my Commissioner.
Commissioner Lee.
Yes, I think it's going to be a great additions to the City of San Gabriel. Thank you for doing business in our city. And also, I would like to commend the staff requirements for landscaping and then tree requirements. It's going to bring greenery to our city, and it would be much pleasant for, for the vacant lot that's needed to be repaired. And also, I think it's going to, since this is not a primary locations, it will be sufficient for the parking, but if we can be creative to create one or two truck parking space, I will recommend that. So, thank you.
And I'd like to say, I agree with my fellow Commissioners, this is definitely an improvement in terms of having an, a existing successful business moving to San Gabriel. That's, that's exciting for us, and the improvements that Commissioner Lee mentioned to the, the parking lot and, and obviously to the sign, those are only going to benefit San Gabriel Boulevard and the property as well. So I'm certainly supportive of having this new business for San Gabriel. So, given that, I would like to make a motion to approve to approve the, the request for a parking reduction. It's CUP number 23-005, conditional use permit on 1830 South San Gabriel Boulevard.
Just to be clear, is the recommended action, the motion to adopt the recommended action to adopt the resolution, approving with the conditions?
Yes.
Not just the parking reduction, but everything included in the resolution?
Right. Second, is there a second?
Sure, I'll, I'll second that.
Thank you, Commissioner McMorris. Okay, roll call, please.
Vice Chair Schwartz.
Yes.
Commissioner Lee.
Aye.
And Commissioner McMorris.
Yes.
The vote is three to zero. Motion passed.
Thank you. Okay. That's the last of our hearing items, so it's time for comments from the planning manager.
No comments, Vice Chair.
The, the council and Where are we now?
Yes, thank you, Vice Chair. Members of the Commission, to provide the Commission with a brief update. That Zone Text Amendment was, there was a split action to approve and to move forward to second reading the density bonus update ordinance, so that will be moving forward to the July 18th City Council meeting for second reading. The draft ordinance for inclusionary housing has been continued to a date uncertain. The City Council has provided staff with a punch list of items to bring back, and, and once those items do become available, they will come before the Planning Commission first before returning back to the City Council, so the Planning Commission will be seeing any updates made to that particular item.
That's good. Okay. Any other comment from the Commissioners? Go ahead.
Yeah, just on that point as well, do we, I, I know this is fairly new development, but do you, does staff have an idea on, on a timeframe on when that might come back and when the, you know, we can see it and potentially get it back up to City Council?
Not a specified time at this moment. That is one of the items that staff along with the city consultant is working on to define the tasks and then the potential timelines and the costs associated with the items requested by the City Council. So that's currently being worked on at this moment.
Okay, and then maybe this is a question for City Attorney. In the meantime, is it, are we allowed to request applicants that come before us to provide affordable housing or encourage them to do so when, when such projects come before us, given that now we're wholly reliant upon the private sector doing, doing that?
Well, until something's formally adopted and the period after adoption, the 30-day waiting period after adoption is expired, we can't enforce any of those code provisions against prospective applicants, and especially in the low-income housing arena where, depending on how they apply, they may vest certain rights on, on certain early application processes that they're involved in. So it has to do with the time that they submit certain applications for their project. So it has to do with the time that they submit certain applications for their project, what locks in the codes that are, will apply to them at that time.
But could we encourage them to use currently the, provide affordable housing through the state's density bonus now or is that something that we, we can't even consider or encourage them to do when they come before us with their project?
Well, encouragement is always welcome.
Okay. I just want to make sure we're, we're going by kind of the letter of the law and that, because I, I plan on doing that. It's, but I don't want to, you know, cross any boundaries that are, are not legally appropriate.
Yeah, most developers in this arena are highly aware and heightened to what their rights are under state legislation in this arena. So it, it can prove difficult to try to nudge in certain directions, but it, it certainly, you can certainly attempt to incentivize or encourage good working relationships with, with future developers.
Okay, thank you for that.
Anything else for the planning manager? Or any other, anything else from the commissioners generally? Okay. In that case, we will adjourn the planning commission meeting to the regular meeting of the planning commission on Monday, August the 14th, 2023, at 6:30 here at City Hall. Meeting is adjourned. 7:03 PM.